Good evening, everybody. Thanks for joining us tonight. Start off with our public meeting statement. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, adequate notice that this meeting has been published in the Burlington County Times and Courier-Post on the third day of July 2025. Additionally, posted on the official bulletin board of the Township of Pembroke on the first day of July 2025. Those wishing to be notified of changes to scheduled meetings were notified via email or regular mail. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ward is absent this evening. Mr. Doyle?
Here.
Mr. Dewey?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Bianchini?
Here.
Okay. We do have a resolution to add, excuse me, to the meeting tonight. It's resolution number 208-2025. I make a motion to add this resolution to tonight's meeting agenda. The resolution is for closed session.
I'll second that.
Bianchini?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
What's that? I now make a motion to adopt resolution number 208-2025 to enter into closed session.
Second?
Mr. Bianchini?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
All right, folks, we're going to go into closed session briefly. Shouldn't be too long, so just please be patient with us. Thank you. Just keep in mind you have a five-minute limit. Let's try to maintain that five minutes out of respect for the people that have come up behind you, okay? We really do appreciate it. All right, the floor is whoever.
Mr. President, if I could, before we start. Ladies and gentlemen, listen, we're overflowing into the hallway, which is a good thing. It's nice to see the residents out here. So if we could keep our comments in the back and in the hallway to a minimum, we want you guys to be able to hear us as well. Not everybody speaks as loud as I am right now. And also, I'm going to ask respect, resident to resident. We're all here to voice your opinion, and that's great. I can't wait to hear them. But do me a favor. We all have difference of opinions at times. Respect one another. No comments or negativity, please, regardless of what people say. I'd appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the town council, community members, and all in attendance. I didn't come here tonight to speak on political matters. I came to speak about what's happening in our township and what it's costing us. My name is Evelyn Grace, and I've had the privilege of working with the township since I was a child, from my earliest days helping out with recreation programs and junior guards to now serving as head guard at our beach. I've grown with this town, and I've seen its best days, and I've seen the heart and effort that goes into making this place feel like a true community. We've had a community at our beach, a real one. Families and kids come to the beach not just for the water, but because they know the guards by name. Just yesterday at my lunch break, I was teaching a kid how to swim because she hadn't passed a swim test. That's the kind of connection we build here. That's why this place means so much, which is why it's incredibly disheartening to be standing here today again. Over the past few months, one person has stood as a backbone of the beach and the Recreation Department, Jen. She's been the one organizing, managing, planning, communicating, and frankly, honing everything together without a single person helping her on her side. She did the job of director even without the title, and yet she is no longer being addressed with the respect she has earned. This is unacceptable. This wasn't just a job for Jen. It was a responsibility she carried with honor, and it wasn't just work, it was community. Through her leadership, the Recreation Department served as a bridge between residents, kids, families, and townships. It was a space where communication flowed, where people felt heard, and where every program, whether summer camps, lifeguard trainings, or holiday events, it brought people together. Even recently, Jen single-handedly set up the water carnival, planned it, organized it, gathered supplies, knowing full well there was a chance it might not even happen. She did it anyway, not because she had to, but because she cares so much for our community. That's the kind of commitment that deserves more than just silence. It deserves support. But now that connection is disappearing. One by one, as we have seen, the dedicated individuals who made the wreck what it was is leaving or being pushed out. And with them goes the soul of our town. The beach no longer feels like the place it once was. The absence of structure, leadership, and familiar faces is something every resident, every parent, and every staff member can feel. I want to make this very clear. Even while medical leave, Jen came to the beach to support us because she understands how important the role of a lifeguard is and how much we need support. I mean, we are basically in charge of lives. She's gone beyond just showing up. Jen has put her own money towards snacks for our hot shifts, and has even replaced important emergency supplies, like rescue boards, that I have seen we've been using since I was in junior guard years ago. That kind of dedication means everything to us. On our very first day we went full-time this season, we had nine saves. Nine lives made safer because we are alert, prepared, and focused. Jen was there. And just last Friday, when a toddler went under because their parents weren't watching, I acted immediately. And when the child threw up all over me, Jen was right by my side making sure I was okay and the kid. We have grown adults cursing at our staff. Our beach access because they couldn't be able to put their umbrella somewhere. And again, Jen was there to support me and de-escalate it when I was supervisor. If you look towards the back of the room, you'll see some of our returning guards, our new guards, and even past guards who are here tonight to support our beach. These new guards chose to join this team because they saw how deeply Jen cared for the lake, for our senior citizens, for every person who visits this township, and they want to be part of that. If you really think about it, these are young people standing in front of you guys for something bigger than themselves. These are kids fighting for their township. That should matter to you guys. I fought for this beach when I was 17, yet again against the mayor and against the township. And I shouldn't have to be standing here again two years later saying the same things. But I am, because if we don't stand up for what we care about, nothing will change. The youngest people in the township are standing up to protect what's left. It's time for all of us to do the same. Thank you.
Good evening, council members.
Before you start, sir. Could lifeguard staff, could I have you raise your hands, please? Take a bow. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to start by saying... You can't hear me? Is this microphone on? Okay, all right. So I'd like to start by saying that I'm here as a resident. I am a member of several township organizations. I speak for myself. I do not speak on behalf of any of these organizations. But that said, I am going to pass along one thing on behalf of one other person who couldn't be here tonight who asked me to say something, and that's my daughter, Annalise. She wanted me to comment on the parade for the Fourth of July that was held in Presidential Lakes. This is a parade that was approved by this council. And while some of the things at the parade that happened were less than pleasant, I don't blame the council for that whatsoever. But I'm going to say that there was some behavior at the parade in protest, and while I do recognize every American's right to protest, even on Fourth of July or especially on Fourth of July, and also here tonight, as it's done in an orderly fashion, I do agree with her that some of the protesting behavior at the parade was disruptive. And I just want to share two words out of her mouth that she felt that the protesting behavior was petty and immature. And she wanted me to say that. Speaking for myself, I'm going to say that I have had conversations with more than one person who have said to me, "This is how the mayor has spoken to me," and I take exception to it. I don't like the way he spoke to me. I'm going to tell you that not only does it make me sad, but I did believe them when they told me. I believed what he said to them. But at the same time, as sad as it makes me, I can't pass judgment because I wasn't witness to it. So as far as any allegations go, the way I see it, and I hope we can all see it, is that's a matter for the courts. That's a matter for the justice system to take care of. The other thing I would like to say, as far as residents who do want to protest, I want to say that two wrongs don't make a right and never do. And that, of course, every resident has a right to express any opinion they want to. But while we're still not out of the woods with this, and while I'm sure there will be more things done and said in protest, I'm just going to ask that all the residents, please, do this in an orderly fashion. Please don't trespass. Please don't create any hostile environment for anybody else. And please don't even litter. Let's do things that we can be proud of. Let's not embarrass our own town. The other thing I would like to say for the council members is that if you do indeed plan on censoring Mayor Tompkins, and if you do indeed plan on taking any official action, I'm going to ask that you do it by resolution, and I'm going to ask that you, in fairness, share with the public what you're wear as is, what you're there for is, and have it be more than just based on things that are not concrete. It should be based on things that are concrete. I probably have more to say. I guess in general, I feel sad and embarrassed for what's going on in this town. And I do not blame one person for it. I don't believe in jumping on bandwagons, but I think there's been too much of that. And I'm just going to caution people about jumping on a bandwagon, and please do what I'm doing, which is to speak for yourself. And... Well, the whole thing's just sad. I'll just say that. The only way we can deal with anything that we think is wrong, like I said, two wrongs don't make a right. And without repeating myself much more, I'm just going to say the only thing that will make anything right is another right. Please only do what's right. Thank you very much. It's okay. You don't have to clap.
I'm done. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of town council, mayor, everybody. Wow, look at our crowd. Amazing. My name is Marty Graf-Wenger, and I am the proud elected president of the BMIA, the oldest civic organization in town incorporated in 1919. Thank you all for being here today. We are all deeply upset about the cancellation of our water carnival, an event that brings this community together. But I must address the reasons given by our mayor, which are simply unacceptable. First, the mayor claims there's a lack of community support for the water carnival. What do we think about that? Right, right. Using residents as an excuse for cancellation, this shifting blame is misplaced. The last-minute cancellation of our treasured water carnival reflects his failed leadership rather than any true absence of support from the community. The pride we have in Brown's Mills comes from our deep roots that many families share, dating back four or five generations or more. These connections are not just about history. They embody our longing for a Brown's Mills that was truly great, a place where traditions are cherished and kept alive. By canceling our water carnival, the mayor demonstrates that he doesn't understand us or our culture at all. The second reason is staff shortages. However, this issue stems from how the mayor treats his employees. There are open positions in the township that he is struggling to fill, and it's likely because the newspapers have reported the numerous lawsuits against him. These lawsuits, which are easily searchable online, detail the disgusting ways he has spoken to and treated his employees. the disgusting ways he has spoken to and treated his employees. Why on earth would anyone want to work in such an environment? The staff shortage is the mayor's fault completely. He cannot hold on to employees, and that's not the residents' fault. That's his fault. Also, there is one person working in recreation, as we just learned. First, we'd like to thank the mayor for agreeing to pay her for her work. That's new from today. She let me know that he agreed to finally pay her for the work that she did as director, which he was refusing to do until now. She's out on medical leave because of all the stress, and she texted me today and said they finally had a meeting, and she's going to get her money. However, well, let me just first say, Jennifer Deeds is quick to respond to my emails and texts. I discuss many things with her. The BMIA and recreation work hand-in-hand to create great events. Yet the mayor has incorrectly told her that she's not qualified to be the director of recreation, despite her successfully managing the role for the past year, single-handedly running an office that previously had at least three staff members. Not only should she be thanked profusely for the wonderful job she's done by herself, but she should be offered the position of director of recreation with a pay raise and sufficient staff. Imagine the exciting events we could plan for fellowship and community if we only had a fully-staffed recreation department. It's time to do that. Give her the job. Good leadership is not about throwing tantrums or making demands. It's about treating people well, hiring the right individuals, and retaining them. The most valuable asset this town has is its people, and it's the mayor's job to act responsibly to foster a community where people want to work and live. Mayor, if you don't care about the businesses in town, community organizations, or the residents, then what do you care about? Why take this job when you're doing nothing to support the community? So, as we face this devastating cancellation together, I ask all of you here today, what about the water carnival next year? How can we ask people to invest their time, energy, and money into building floats? How can we expect businesses to invest supplies and funds for the influx of people coming into town for a water carnival when the mayor is set against having it and is sabotaging any chance we have in having it again? How can we do that? The people who live here, the taxpayers whose hard-earned hours make it possible for this town to have every single thing deserve to have a say in how their money is spent. The water carnival is a tradition that goes back to 1943. People love this tradition. They love the lakes. And you are telling them they can't have it, and your explanation and lame excuses are a disgrace. Some would say I'm taking a political stance. I disagree. Some would say the BMIA should stick to planning parties. And hey, we love doing that. But we are the Improvement Association, and we've been around since 1919, and we fight for what's right in this town, advocating for improvements that benefit our community and our members. Our first tenant in the BMIA is advocacy. In fact, I would say this mayor has managed to do something almost impossible in this political climate. Did you know he's a uniter? He's managed to unite both Democrats and Republicans against him. In this world of deep political polarization, he has brought everyone together in opposition to him. No, BMIA is not political. We have members that are Democrat and Republican, and we're not about that. We're about community first, Pemberton first. We do stand up for what's right over what's wrong. The people deserve better than what's been going on. They must have leadership that respects its staff, prioritizes community events, and fosters an atmosphere where everyone feels valued. Thank you.
Alright, that was really great. Hi, everyone. My name is Tatiana Brown. I'm somewhat new to this community. I've been here for about two years, and I moved here because of the lakes and how beautiful I thought this town was. I work for Pemberton Township High School. I'm paid by the Board of Education. I'm out of work right now as a teacher, but I'm very disappointed. Recently, I was hit with $6,000 in fines. Not sure why. I did appeal it, but I received three fines, each of them were $2,000 each, for structures that existed before I even lived there. This house that I bought and renovated, I spent all my savings on it. The house was a mess. I bought up the property value on my street. I just feel like some of my neighbors are against me. I feel like the township, I don't get the responses that I want. And I'm just really upset. And also hearing the things about the mayor, the sexual allegations, or whatever else, just were, you know, on the street. And it's just very upsetting. And I just wanted to come up here and, you know, hopefully things change, and thank you.
Tatiana. Tatiana, come here.
Alright, let me address council if I might. My comments come after observing our governance for the past two years on almost a monthly basis. And it is about the water carnival right now, and that's the most current issue. And it is about our lifeguards, which, I mean, nobody's better than our summer crew at that beach. Never has been in 52 years that I've lived here. But this is about more than a water carnival. This is about your inaction, sir. This is about your failed attempts to put forth a qualified, acceptable candidate for business administrator in the duration of your term. This is about your obstinance in refusing to work with council on personnel and operational issues. This is about your major role in entering into two catastrophic redevelopment agreements, neither of which, by the way, neither of which of those properties are paying taxes or have paid taxes since the agreements were signed, one of which is costing us our oldest existing structure and a prime piece of property at Sycamore Hall, the other of which will no doubt end up in court for many more years, the huge warehouse on Route 38. And then there are your actions. The eight lawsuits against you contain allegations that are so egregious that lawyers and insurance companies so far have opted to settle rather than risk going to a jury trial. I've lived here for more than 52 years and have never seen this level of incompetence and failure to fulfill promises to the electorate. And I haven't been an absent resident. For 15 years, I sat in this very room every single month at every single township committee meeting, and after that, the change of government came through. I was in council meetings for 15 years, every single one of them. And never, I will repeat, have I seen this level of incompetence and failure to fulfill promises to the electorate. I raised four children, and while there was, in this township, and while there was a law for a while there, there are now these wonderful families with children living on our street. And even more, if any more years of the mayor in governance will take too much away from those children, from their future, to allow him to continue. I'm asking you to resign. You don't belong here. You're not doing the job. You don't care. You don't treat people well. Please step down. I'm asking. You know, and that's it. And that's really it. That is your attitude, and that is what you have projected to people from day one, even as a candidate. Oh, you're, yeah, you're not looking like you're going to vote for me. Let me just walk away from you. You have, you have, you've not, you don't have the level of competence or empathy to be a governing official. You just don't have it, sir.
Good evening. My name is Louis Lopez. I'm a Mahali resident in County of Burlington. It's been a few years I've been here since the Burlington County College. That's how long I've been here. Just curious, what is the status of that property that I came here? Do you know the answer?
Sir, we can answer your questions as soon as you get done addressing us. When you get done with everything, we'll be happy to answer your questions. But we don't want to interfere with your five minutes.
Oh, okay. Okay. And second is, I see a lot of different things. The gates. What's the purpose, I mean, of that gate? Before it was open, I mean, a few years ago. And Ms. Willis, I think she is a Pemberton Township resident. You know her? Ms. Willis, she go to the county freeholder. Okay, that's from one of my friends. And also, during three different livestreams. When I say three, TikTok, Instagram, and Facebook Lives, all-in-one platform, high-power, full battery. Today, I'm having a note. Also, I'm a YouTube journalist. My YouTube journalist, I do record meetings in Burlington County. That's including Sam Pemberton, Mark Law, Mon Harley, Lamonton, sometimes, Woyes. I record them from my YouTube account to let everyone know what's going on in Burlington County. It's easy to be searched. If you want to see, type four names, Louis Lopez-Mon Harley, it would be the first search. And I want to also thank the Democrat Committee of Pemberton for letting me know about this meeting. And I want to not, I want to not, I want to not happen as the Lamonton Township, they have the same problem, but they are fixing it. I hope it don't happen to right here. You have the power to censor the mayor. I know that Orleans can't be any different than Lamonton Township. It can't be any different. Same county. You have the power to do that, to censor. And that's my end of our comment.
Aaron, you want to answer the Berlin County College question? Alright, thank you, Louis. I see you all the time at the county commissioner meetings. I go quite a bit myself. As you well know, the college is still, they just got their permits to start tearing the buildings down. The county has not given us any information of late of what they're going to do after that, but they do have the permits and permission to start tearing the buildings down at this time.
Okay, thank you for your kind, thank you for asking me that, yes. I hope I could be here. Many, many more. Thank you.
Louis, as far as your second question, sir, about the gates, the gates were installed by administration here of the township building. Had nothing to do with us. Wasn't approved by us. It wasn't even approached to us to install them. They were installed by administration.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mary Presley. I've been a resident of Brownsville since 1996. And I'm here to say, I don't know all that's going on with you, mayor, but I do know that you are the mayor and you are the council. You all need to figure it out. It's not all the mayor's fault. You have a council here. All I know is, I don't want my taxes to be used for lawsuits. I don't want to see the township just become stagnated, 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 stagnated. We don't know what's, I mean, when are we going to move along? The old Acme is sitting there. All kinds of things are trying to happen. It won't happen. So I think everybody needs to consider. If the mayor doesn't decide to resign, he was elected. He doesn't have to resign. So I think we need to move on and figure out how to work with the mayor and the council to get this town moving along. And you all can't, you're not blaming us either, residents. I've been here since 1996. I have seen so much division. I call it the no township. Everything that's brought about, somebody says no, and it doesn't happen. So I think we need to consider keeping the mayor, working with the, and the mayor and the council working together. I'm sorry. Who's going to replace him?
Ladies and gentlemen, please, please. This is what I was talking about. Ma'am, you need, I hate to say this, folks, I understand you have a lot of people you want to talk to, but you have to address the council, please. Okay? Everybody else is here to listen to you, but it's a council meeting, and you can come up front and you address the council. Thank you.
And council, same thing. All I see ahead of us is a bunch of stagnation, no progression. Pemberton Township is a beautiful township.
Yes, it is.
I don't know if anybody, you guys understand just how beautiful it is and all that it has to offer. We need revenue. Our taxes are going to go up. Anybody concerned about that? How are we going to get revenue in here? So I think, again, if the mayor decides to resign, who's going to replace him? And is that person for the township? Does it matter if Republican or Democrat or independent? Or they don't vote at all? Are they for the people? Are they for progression? This town is stagnant. You can't get businesses in here. And if we don't get it going, that old Acme area, I imagine the investors are going to sue us for that. I don't want my tax money going to a bunch of suits. That's all I have to say.
Council president, can I address one thing that was brought up?
Yes.
Ms. Presley?
I'm sorry. Mary?
You brought up the old Acme Plaza. You don't have to come up. There's a lot of rumors, speculation on that. The last thing that we put out was, it went through the planning board. It was approved through the planning board. Super Wawa was going in. Taco Bell was going in. Grocery Outlet was going in. Seven retail outlets, I believe, were in there.
Come on, man. This is too long for that.
Since then, there has been a change. I don't know if you've noticed, the news, Grocery Outlet is downsizing. They have withdrawn their offer, and they're out of that. The developer has been talking to another major retailer to go into that facility, into that area. They're also talking to another grocery outlet to go in there. But their redevelopment agreement, they're on their fourth extension right now. It ends very soon. They've requested the council to extend that. The last thing I saw was a letter from the township attorney saying that they would not extend it unless they had an signed agreement with that national realtor. So that's where we are on the Acme Plaza.
Thank you for your attention. Again, we need to move on. It's all stagnation.
Hello. My name is Alyssa Rose, and I'm coming to speak with a last-minute speech to address the issues going on with the lake. Standing beside me is Anthony. I debated speaking tonight because I don't have the nicest things to say. In my time here, the lake has brought individuals and families from all walks of life and travelers from surrounding states. That, in the last two years, I've noticed is dwindling. I've noticed under the mayor's leadership, employee morale and connection has gone down. Guards do not want to return to the lake as the years go on. They're uncomfortable knowing that a man that isn't even allowed on the lake is our boss during Jennifer's leave. The mayor has said multiple inappropriate comments to staff. I was quite upset by one of the speaker's comments that we shouldn't move forward without having any proof, but I think all of the staff leaving as the years go on is proof enough. We at the lake are... We, at the lake, are our own community. That's why Anthony's standing up here with me right now, to have my back. But, again, as I said, as the years go on, that's dwindling, and the connection and the community is falling apart. And I fear that in the next few years, you will have a lack of lifeguards and a place where everybody comes to be together will be no longer. And that's all I really have to say.
Good job, Alyssa.
I'm Vicki Adams, many of you know me. I am standing here as a citizen and not as a school board member, just to make sure everybody understands that. I have never stood before this podium as a school board member, I've always stood here as a citizen. The actions that I take out in private life have been as a citizen, not a school board member, that I get constantly accused of. This weekend, I went to the parade, I was the one that they were talking about, and I had this exact sign that says, "Community first, the mayor has to go." This is something that I have been saying since the first year he was in here, when the first lawsuit came up with Nicole, when he treated me like crap, when he did the things he did to me, the yelling, the putting fear in me, when I thought he was going to come at me and hit me because of his anger. Okay? This mayor has to go. He has did so many underhanded things. Tonight, I was looking at your handout. There's things in there, this mayor needs to go. As far as costing us township money, it wouldn't cost us money if he wouldn't have acted like he's acted. Okay? As far as not moving forward to this, address this lady over here, we would be moving forward if he kept his word to our residents and given them a place to stay, a business to go into. When he had the money, he was going to buy the building, and he was refused. We would have been, there would have been no stagnation, we would have been moving forward. The mayor stopped all that. The board did not. Just so you know, I know I haven't seen you here, but that's the way it is. Sorry, I'm supposed to be addressing you. I am tired of this township being split, and we're split because of this man right now. You know, one of the people said that he's brought the people together, the Democrats and Republicans are all against him now. You know? Because there, we're a united front on that. And Mr. Tompkins, you need to leave. You need to show us that you have the balls enough to be a man and say, you know what? You don't want me here, I'm going. Because that's going to show me that maybe there's some truth in your character, because right now, the character that you have presented to me over the last three years has been that of a weasel. Has been that of somebody who would go behind anybody's back. I feel sorry for your wife and your daughter. Because you know what? If you treat them like you treat the women in this district, I'm sorry, but I need to say a prayer for them. Okay? This is, he's got to go. Okay? I, I, I am truly sorry if that upsets him, but I need him to realize the magnitude of how his family feels, how he makes the other families feel, and what we went through. I would go home from work nights crying because of his behavior. I would not, I would not want to go into work the next day because of his behavior. These lawsuits that are coming up, we have, I think, I think we had eight, and then two were settled, and now we have seven? I think, I was told. You know, it's ridiculous. We would be better off firing him, censuring him, doing whatever, and risking a lawsuit from him than to continue to get the lawsuits in the speed of time that he gets us lawsuits.
I agree.
You know? Because guess what? We'd win the lawsuit that he would put towards us because of all the evidence we have towards him. That he did not fulfill his promise, he did not act with integrity, he did not do the things that a person of an elected official should be doing. Okay? He has not acted ethically, I think he took an ethics oath, you know? He hasn't acted according to the Constitution in some of the things. He's violated people's federal laws and other things that have caused these lawsuits to happen. So, yes, our mayor has to go.
Yes. Last time I was here, none of you were here, well, except for Amy. My name is Susan Sacco, Sunbury Village. One of you was here when I used to come all the time, when Dave was mayor and everything, and it was pre-cancer, so now that it's post-cancer, I'm back. And especially for this meeting, because what he had said, that the mayor had said things to people, I was the one who said that. When Jason Allen, when, the first election, when Dave was running against Jack, Jason had asked me to go to the meet and greet, to meet Josh, who's not here, and Daniel, and Jack. I went up to Jack and said, you know, Susan Sacco, Sunbury Village, have you ever been in Sunbury Village? Do you know Sunbury Village? Do you know that it's 25% of your crime? What are you planning on doing about it when you come, if you come into office? And I was a registered Democrat, I would have switched parties had he said something nice. He wanted to sit there and belittle the current administration that was in. Yeah, it was stagnant, and you know, there were problems, but you don't sit there and talk against your, you know, a meet and greet. And then turned to me and said, well, you're obviously not going to vote for me, so have a nice day. So I came to one meeting after that, where he argued with Andy, you know, kicking, wanting to kick Andy out and getting him out and all this, and I said, never again will I come. Today, I'm coming because I've been in Sunbury Village for 15 years. Okay? I'm not, I guess what you consider normally what would be in Sunbury Village, but it is coming around, and we are working on it, and we are trying to improve it with no help from the mayor. We had an event down at the Nesbitt Center, I can't even think how long it was, chemo brain. And the mayor never showed up. Like, it was an event for the kids, the police department was there, you know, it was a fantastic event, mayor was nowhere to be found. A mayor who is that absent to the...
I'm not sure if he's there.
Yes, but he'll be watching on the video. And this man, who I've been to his laundromat for years, okay? When I've laundered, when I've had washer and dryer, and when I haven't had washer and dryer, okay? He's always been there for our community. You don't treat people like that. You don't treat people like that. He's got to go. Thank you.
Hi, I've never spoke before. All right. I'm Sarah DeFalco.
Ma'am, can you get real close to the microphone?
I'm Sarah DeFalco of Lester Street. I received a challenge coin from Jack while I was a volunteer firefighter for the township. Upon seeing Jack's lack of ethics and morality, I am here to return this coin. Shame on you. Jack, you should resign. Council, censure this mayor. I don't know where he went.
Returning a challenge coin, that is such a slap in the face. Good job.
I also gave one two years ago, too, so...
All right. My name's Joe Anderson. I lived here since 63, so... I wish that mayor would come back out here and you didn't scare him off like that. We're here tonight, basically, to censor the mayor, but when this all happened, you posted on Facebook, you knew what the next, very next day, what did he do? When you, this was posted on Facebook, the next, very next day, he canceled the water council, water carnival. The very next day. I want to know, why was the water carnival canceled? And we were supposed to have township, public heads here, where are they at?
They're here, sir. Keep finishing, and we'll address your questions.
Well, I got five minutes, I'm waiting for the answers. Why was the water carnival canceled?
Okay, so, the department heads, one couldn't make it, we knew in advance, and we got a statement from that department head. Another department head, one of our council members spoke to him. The chief was here, he's outside providing security because there was somebody that was supposed to show up, these monitors. So, we have been in communication with all of them. And as you can see, community director and CFO are still here. So we, I'm sorry?
We always, we grew up with the water carnival.
All right, let me, let me get to that, sir. So, there were some challenges in each department except for Public Works, and most of them were Manning, as has been brought up by a couple of the residents tonight. People are leaving, not coming back, and these positions are hard to fill. We know our police department is short-staffed, rec department, obviously, we know that Jen was a team of one, who did a fantastic job. The fire department, we know they've been short for a while. While those challenges were presented to the mayor, none of the department heads said, no, do not have the water carnival. That was canceled by one person.
Who was that?
The mayor.
So, he did provide two reasons to us, and one of the most disturbing things that bothered me personally was the number one reason he stated was lack of community participation.
Hold on, Perry.
And then staffing.
Marty, how many people were supporting you in the water carnival?
How many votes?
How many votes, and how many people, again, just...
Hundreds, hundreds.
Okay.
On our committee, we had nine people on our committee, our entire membership, and of course, community members. But yeah, hundreds of them.
That's the reason, Joe.
That's the reason.
That's the reason.
So...
Well, let me give you some more information. Joe, let me, let me give everybody some more information.
What about the council right now? Do you think the community should go forward with the water carnival, anyhow?
You can do whatever you want.
Do you support that?
Oh, I support it 100%.
Do you support it, Perry?
That's a silly question, you know I do.
All right. Mr. Harbor, you support it?
Oh, yes, 100%.
Do we?
Yep.
100%?
Yep.
You support it with the water carnival?
The only thing, Joe, that we could have would be fireworks, but anything with the lake, I don't see why we can't.
Well, it's called the water carnival, it's not called the water fireworks.
Yeah, but I'm just saying...
Yeah, I know, I think more people, all these people that put in the work all year long, nobody said nothing. You didn't say nothing in March, you didn't say nothing in April, May, June, about the shortage of the people, the shortage of public works, the shortage of peace.
I got this.
Nothing was ever said at none of these councils. That lady right there, Marty, came up here every damn month, two times a month, about the water carnival, about the water, and nobody said a word about, well, we're going to have shortages, I don't think we're going to be able to have that water carnival.
Joe, you're a little fired up, I'm going to fire you up a little bit more. Okay? So the mayor held a secret meeting in June 11th, one week before our last council meeting.
With the department?
With the department heads, and that's where he got the feedback on the challenges they were facing, but nobody said no. So he knew, June 11th, what was going on with the different challenges each department had, June 11th. June 11th, a week before the last council meeting. A council meeting where we actually approved funding for the water carnival. He knew at that point what he was going to do, but he waited till the week before to cancel. And he told his employees, his department heads, don't tell anybody about this meeting on June 11th.
And he also did it the day after you posted about...
He could have informed us, at least give us a heads up, hey, by the way, we have some, he could have said it at the council meeting on June 18th. Nothing was ever said.
What about Craig Agostini? What about Craig Agostini? Did he...
He did not say no.
He did not say no?
No. He was, he was short fire police, and of course, we all know the challenges with the volunteerism, with not just...
Well, how are we ever going to put a parade on or anything in this town because we're so short?
He's, I'm going to run it, get rid of him.
But boy, we can put a parade on Presidential Lakes, can't we?
They're self-sufficient. I mean, the very, very negligible support for the township. So, the Presidential Lakes Parade, that's off limits right now.
Well, what's next? What's the next event coming up? We're going to cancel that one, too? Anything Halloween, Christmas? How about the Christmas tree? Can we light that without having, we're going to have a tree lighting ceremony? Or are we going to cancel because we can't get enough people out there? That, you know...
Joe, we, we are not disagreeing with you in any way, shape, or form. We are here for the township. The five of us on council are here for the township.
Yeah, I know.
But we are, we are cut off at any turn.
That's where you were wrong, lady. If you had been, coming to these council meetings, you would have saw that this council has tried everything, everything they try to do, this man over here says no, or don't want to talk to him, or get something, did what he did tonight. If you come to some of these council meetings, you would have saw that.
He don't, he out.
So, I hope you censor him, I don't know what that's going to do, but, huh, what's it going to do, censoring him? He's just going to sit over there and not answer no questions then, every council meeting? And I want to say one other thing. When this is all over, said and done with, and this mayor is gone, he ain't going to get one vote. I don't care who runs the next time, we got to change this form of government. There's no way one man can have that much power, all right? The council can't have that much power, and this one man can't. This form of government has got to change. I don't care who the next mayor is, if he does shit like this, he's got to go. And the council's got to vote on him. If they say he goes, he goes.
We're, we're working with Mr. Dasty on reviewing what we need to do to change the form of government.
Whoever put this form of government in, now we got to get it out.
There you go.
That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm in agreement with everything that was said tonight, but I do have, I just want to clarify some stuff. So, I've been hearing that Mr. Ellie, who I don't know personally, but that he is not being given an area that he would like to open up his business, right? When he moved from that. So, as a former councilwoman with a previous administration, the only thing I recall us agreeing to with those three businesses that were there was that they would be entitled to a spot in the new area that was going to be put there, right? That's it, nothing else was promised. They didn't get promised that they can go somewhere else in the community, they didn't get promised that they would have to, they would pay the same amount of rent or anything like that. So, I need clarification as to why do you think that the township should be moving him or anybody else for that matter, where they want to go?
No, that, I'll take it, you can jump in. So, the township was supposed to provide assistance, not find the location, pay for the location, but provide assistance. That was the extent of it.
Assistance as far as what?
As to, as to assist with the relocation. And then the developer was going to reimburse the township for whatever cost the township might have incurred during that assistance, the relocation assistance.
I don't recall that either. Is that in writing?
Yeah, we're on the Fifth Amendment to the agreement, that agreement, by the way, so it has changed a little bit since you were up here.
Right, okay.
But, no, nothing where they're going to say, hey, we found a spot for you, here you go. But they're supposed to provide assistance, no assistance was provided at all. And a matter of fact, Dr. Varela and Mr. Ellie were completely ignored when they had requested some information.
So, the other business, you mean, that was there?
Doctor, yeah, the, the foot doctor.
The foot doctor.
Yes, yes, yes.
So what did he do?
Who?
The foot doctor.
She, she packed up.
She do, I'm sorry, she?
She packed up and left, yeah.
She left?
She's retired, called it quits. And then Derek, we did the same thing, yeah.
Got it, okay. So, somebody else has something else to say?
Gay, originally, you were right, yeah, the original agreement did say that they would be allowed into a new section of the building, but somewhere in the changes, they decided that he wanted to tear down all the buildings at the same time.
Oh, yes.
And that's when they knew... And that's when the new amendment came to offer them assistance to move and relocate.
Okay.
And since then, you know, the developer and, I guess, the mayor have decided not to follow through with that, so, yeah.
But I've been to a few meetings in the past, and I've been hearing that, and that's why I can't, I come here for myself, I don't need to hear rumors.
Right.
So, but what I understood is that Mr. Ellie wanted to move somewhere else, right?
Yes.
And the community sound like they feel like that's what should happen. Why?
Well, what, uh...
They wanted to buy the property.
Right, but the township doesn't have to sell it to him, though. Especially if they had plans for it already.
Well, there's no plans for the place where he, he wanted to buy the emergency squad.
Right.
The township hasn't collected a penny taxes on that building in 80 years. He was offered to pay like $200,000 for the property, renovate it, he was gonna put, originally, if I'm wrong, swing your cane, originally, he was gonna put the Dairy Queen because he didn't need all the room.
Right, oh, that's...
So, he was gonna petition it off, and he was gonna put John from the Dairy Queen.
Okay.
So, when John found out that with the new franchise with Dairy Queen, that he would have to do hot dogs, hamburgers, french fries...
Too much, right, right.
And he would have to put out $400,000 in equipment, he decided to retire.
Walk away, right, right, right.
So, then came, uh, Dr. Vare, Varell, I believe he offered her the space so they could both move in there. And, and you were in the township long enough, here's a property that you didn't collect any taxes, he was gonna renovate it.
Mm-hmm.
So, what's a commercial property worth when it's all done? You know, we could have generated $30,000 a year taxes on the property.
Right.
Instead of nothing for 80 years. And there's no plans for that property, there's a lot of pipe dreams, you know? They tore all the built, the businesses that were there, what, 12 years ago?
Right, right.
You know, I mean, that was all buildings in there, and they tore them all down, and we lost all those ratables. So, you know, we're trying to lift the town, but, um, the snapping turtle over there is dug in the mud, he won't move.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted clarification.
Honestly, you're giving my opinion, it was just one of those things, and I've been following this, I've been coming to meetings for a few years now. It was a matter of opportunity for the township and for a lifelong business in town. We had the ability to hand the man a building, hand him the keys, and he was gonna do all the renovations to a severely dilapidated building out of his own pocket. All the township was obligated to do, according to the new redevelopment agreement, that the modification, was just provide him assistance in moving, that was it. And then, when the redevelopment plan went through and they started construction, they were gonna reimburse the township for every dime that we provided him assistance with. So, we could have gone out of our way and provided him a building that, as Mr. Dewey was saying, hasn't collected taxes in over 20 years. And I'm sure it probably would have, would have improved the visibility of the, the aesthetic view of the building itself, as, as well as satisfy a businessman that's been dedicated to the town. To me, my, again, my personal opinion, it's a win-win for the residents, for the business, and for the town.
Mm-hmm, thank you. That's why I came to ask the questions myself.
Thanks, Gay.
Hello, everyone, my name is Julia, I'm in Oak Pines. Um, uh, my husband and I are kind of a recent resident, last few months we've been here. We're loving it so far, we've met a lot of great people. Um, just wanted to share an anecdote, what I have experienced in the town that's been so great, you know, I was at the Acme, shopping there for the first time, um, in town, and I actually had a woman go and find barbecue sauce for me, and, and lead us to the aisle, and, you know, hand it to us, and that's the kind of community spirit that we love about Pemberton here, and we're very happy to be here, and it's, it's very sad what's happening with the mayor. Um, as you heard him, obviously, you know, he's not gonna do the honorable thing, he's not gonna resign. Um, so I'm just here to say, you know, don't, to everyone who's expressed sadness and fears of the future and, and community connection, you know, community comes from all of us, and just, don't let his actions, um, you know, stop you from being connected to your neighbors, going to events even if they're canceled, go to any, to the location anyway, you know, that's what I plan to do. Um, and, and just, you know, keep it alive, because his political power is limited, uh, he will be gone one day, and, you know, just make sure we all stay together through this, this period, and, and I would say censor him, of course, he doesn't care, but, uh, you know, we can do what we can, so, that's all I have to say.
Welcome to Pemberton Township.
Joe Fallon, 32 Clubhouse Road, Browns Mills. Unfortunately, I'm probably going to repeat because I was in the overflow out there, and you really can't hear what's going on. But, if this were a corporation, and the CEO behaved the way this mayor is behaving, he would have been shown the door. Unfortunately, because of this form of government, he can't be shown the door, he has to take it voluntarily. Um, I mentioned a month, month and a half ago, I suggested you all start the process of getting on the ballot a change in form of government. We see what happens when people of ill-will get the power and decide not to look out for the township and the residents. The cancellation of the water carnival is just a blatant example of poor planning and management on his part. This is not a pop-up event that, "Oh gee, we decided to have it, now we're short staff." We knew it last year that we were going to have it this year. Someone didn't figure that out? If we're to take that letter at face value, the departments all of a sudden looked around and said, "Hey, we don't have enough people." I mean, surprise, we had a year to figure this out, and he couldn't do it. The bug for the failure of the carnival stops at his desk. And the fact that he, at the last minute, announces this, gee, wow. Couldn't have done it two, three months ago? It had to be coincidentally at the time that the special meeting was called? The residents are paying for his misbehavior and mistakes. And we're going to continue to pay, I guess, as we move along, because unless he shows himself to the door, we're going to pay. And that is another example of him not having the interest of the residents in mind as a first priority. The interesting thing is, we've all seen that little saying, "Lead, follow, or get the hell out of the way." Well, he doesn't want to lead, he won't follow, so it would be nice if he showed himself to the door. And, given where we are today, I mean, unfortunately, and I didn't hear what was going on, so I haven't heard any responses, the water carnival is done. A lot of people have been hurt by it financially, and it was, you know, his wave of the hand, and there you are. Spitefulness, I believe. So, again, I say, at this time, it's appropriate, if you all go do change form of government, get it back up on the ballot so the residents can vote. We did it before, we thought we chose a good form of government. And unfortunately, we're finding out now that it's not the case, but you have to have people of goodwill sitting in your seats and in the mayor's seat. And unfortunately, one isn't goodwill. So, it's interesting, and I'll leave with this, you all are of the same party here. I could understand this if we had opposite parties. This does not make any sense, and it, it really hurts the community. There's nothing more to be said except change of form of government. I mean, and, and, we're supposed to have this carnival again next year. There should be planning going on after this one was over, to start up. Thank you.
Mr. Fallon, I agree with everything you said, and we are looking into, we're working with our solicitor, Mr. Dasty, to look into changing the form of government, and what steps we will need to take to make that happen. We are looking into it.
Good. Good evening. Good evening, my name is Robert, and I have lived in Pemberton my entire life, and I am now serving as the waterfront coordinator for Mirror Lake Beach, and I have worked at Mirror Lake Beach since the summer of 2020. Before I continue, I want to say how proud I am of all of the lifeguards and recreation aides I work with at Mirror Lake, for the hard work they put in, the effort they put into their jobs, the dedication they have to protecting the lives of all those who come to Mirror Lake, and the amazing young adults they have, have and are becoming. It is because of them I have returned for the past six years, and I continue to work at Mirror Lake. In terms of the recreation department, I can say hands down, there is no one more deserving of the director's position than Jennifer Deeds. She has shown time and time again that she is dedicated, hardworking, and caring, and a caring individual. She has gone above and beyond for not only us lifeguards and the recreation aides, but for the community as a whole. While I am glad to hear tonight that she has been paid for her hard, deserved hard work, she deserves the director's position. Additionally, in terms of the water carnival, I think it is a shame that it was canceled. I can say our seasonal lifeguarding and recreation staff are more than, more than ready and more than willing to step up and take the ex, take on extra work to help this event go on. I am sad to see the major loss of community that has struck this township, that, that has struck Pemberton Township. Pemberton has always been a fun, loving, and supporting community, and I unfortunately have seen its lose this in the recent years. I hope that moving forward, this sense of community I once saw and knew as a young child will soon return.
Thank you, Robert. Robert, you and the lifeguards do a tremendous job, don't lose faith.
My name is Richard Al, live at 23 Terrace Road, Pineview Village. I've been here since 2017, but my roots to this town go back, my mother graduated from Pemberton High School. So, I've got a connection to this town for a long time. She moved back here, uh, back in the mid-'90s, and I visited her down here, was impressed with the town and like that. And when I chose, my wife and I chose to end our marriage, this is where I chose to relocate, and where I, at the time, planned on being until they carry me out feet first. First of all, to everyone that works as a lifeguard, my son, my nieces and my nephews have do life, have done lifeguarding growing up, I know what a job it is, everybody thinks, "Oh, they'll just sit around on the tower and don't do anything," every, there's more to it than that, it is a tough job. Thank you very much for your service, and I hope you continue on, given the circumstances we have now. When I first started getting involved, back in the planning board meetings and like that, I had several discussions in, when I was giving presentations with Jack, and he seemed to reflect what I was thinking. Uh, I thought he had my back. Not so much anymore. Okay? I have worked for an Australian company, for a British company, currently working for an American company, and many of the things that has happened as employees, we were given notices that we needed to report up the chain of, chain of command, so, management didn't get bit. Uh, it's not happening here, and of course, the chain of command ends with the person that's the problem. I don't, he does not have the interest of this company, uh, town in mind. For what he did to the gentleman with the laundromat and the rescue squad, that was a win-win. As a businessman, that was a win-win. And from what I understand, what he did in the background, just, "Oh, I'll just tear it down, and that'll be the end of it." Uh, I understand Circumeral Hall, we got the shaft on that one, uh, we ended up, uh, losing, uh, probably a valuable asset to this town. I have to encourage you all, please, do what you can, censor him, hopefully, he'll take the hint and leave. I'll repeat what Joe said, let's change the government. We can't have some one person just run roughshod over the rest of us. Be as, you a Democrat, be Republican, once you take the oath of office, you represent everybody in this town. You don't just represent the Republicans, you don't represent the Democrats, you represent everybody. You're not gonna, please, everybody. Uh, but it seems like right now, someone's not pleasing anybody, so he needs to go. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your feedback tonight. Let's hope it was heard loud and clear. I don't remain too hopeful, unfortunately. All right. Move on to resolution. Okay, there's one resolution on the agenda tonight, and that is Resolution 207-2025, calling upon the mayor of Pemberton Township to resign effective immediately. I'm gonna read, I'm going to read the resolution. Calling upon the mayor of Pemberton Township to resign effective immediately, whereas the Township Council, Township of Pemberton, County of Burlington, State of New Jersey, here and after, referred to as the Township, has become aware of recent actions by the mayor of Pemberton Township, including, but not limited to the following, disregarding and ignoring a qualified township employee for the position of a department head, driven by personal vendetta, political favoritism, and a deep-rooted hostility towards, toward this woman who dares to stand independently and dares to react to your improper and potentially illegal actions. Whereas, the Township Council finds once again that the mayor's committed acts deemed to be unethical, not in accordance with the Township code and potentially illegal, all of which cause harm to the Township, its residents, and taxpayers. Whereas, the Township finds that as a result of the mayor's actions, Pemberton Township has been subjected, has been subject to repeated legal challenges, internal dysfunction, and a toxic environment that undermines the trust in local government. Whereas, the Township finds that the mayor refuses to work collaboratively with council, has ignored qualified candidates for critical roles, and weaponized appointments as tools of control rather than service. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Township Council, Township of Pemberton, and the County of Burlington, State of New Jersey, as follows. Because of the ongoing pattern of misconduct, obstruction, and blatant disregard for ethical governance, the council calls upon the mayor to resign immediately. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 207-2025.
I'll second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dewey?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Viankini?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're gonna wrap up with council comments. Um, Perry? Go left or right this time.
All right. Whole lot of people here tonight, I even provided an opening, I hope you guys can respect me for that, in the beginning of the meeting, I opened a door for those who may be in support of Mr. Tompkins to please come up and speak, because I represent everybody, not just a portion of you. That door was open and closed, and, uh, I heard what I heard. The biggest thing I thought I was gonna get when I joined this position was, and somebody put it earlier, with, with all of us being of the same party... put it earlier, with all of us being of the same party, you know, my parents raised me to be part of the team, maybe that's why I took to athletics when I went through school. You know, a team works best achieving one common goal, and that's to win. That's why I always wanted to be part of the team. That's why I lost interest in wanting to hold his position. That is an I position. I did this, I did that. We are a team up here. I really thought, when I got elected in January, that I was gonna be a member of a six-man team. I thought we were all on board. And I, six months into this, I really saw us being in that direction, and we're so far that way. The biggest obligation we have up here to you people is to protect your wallets. Watch where the money goes, make sure it's being spent properly. And if we're gonna splurge, if I use the word, we do things like the water carnival. I heard some comments earlier this evening about having the water carnival on your own. The only thing I can tell you about that is, number one, I would love to see it. I put that on the record when Mr. Anderson asked me. That is not a Pemberton Township water carnival. That would be a community gathering for a water carnival. Has nothing to do with Pemberton Township, has everything to do with all of you people enjoying the things that we have here in town, as we intended to provide for you, but obviously fell short because of one person making that decision. If you get together, the only thing I can ask, and I implore you all, because the one thing I look forward to in the water carnival is, it's not only our residents. You guys bring your families from other towns. You know, it's not just about Pemberton Township residents. It's the one thing we do. Mount Holly does fireworks. They have a Mount Holly Day. I attended, because it's nice to see other people getting together and having a good time together. And that's what our water carnival does for us. That's the one time of the year, maybe the St. Anne's Carnival or something else that we have up here, but where everybody gets together just to be together. Please, 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 if by chance anybody goes to the lake that day and you do your thing, please keep in mind the things that are important for safety for everyone. The blocking of the streets. Amy, I don't even know, do we have vendors who put in for permits for that day already? Is that all taken care of? They paid for them?
We do have vendors, however, I've already received the request for refunds from those vendors from the recreation.
So will that be approved for their refund prior to that water carnival date, or would that be afterwards?
No, it would be afterwards, because the next council meeting is July.
So technically, their permits are still valid?
I can't answer that question with any knowledge, since I'm not sure how those permits work.
Got you. Okay. I mean, again, I'm just looking at it as trying to get as much out of this as possible. Anybody read between the lines there? I would love to see this township, these residents, not this township, these residents, get together and do something good together, and have it wind up at the end of the day when everybody goes home. Wow, the police department wasn't burdened, nobody got any tickets for acting out of control, and everybody had a good time. And for all of you who invested not your money but your time with Marty or any other individuals to step up and be a part of this, to try to make it bigger every year, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I truly apologize for him leaving. I know it's not my place, but I wanted to be able, at the end of my speech, to look at him and just ask him, as a man, to please resign. You cannot do enough good in the next 18 months to make up for what you've done in the last 32. Nothing, nothing you can do. And now we have the burden to prepare ourselves financially with your money with what's to come. So please bear with us, and I thank you all for coming tonight. It was an amazing turnout. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, all for coming. You know, what we originally came here for, I mean, we shouldn't have been here tonight if we had communication in this building. You know, the mayor, and I'll call him that lightly, chooses not to communicate with council. This could have all been avoided. We could have had a water carnival, we could have not had the problems we have with him trying to get an employee out of the position she deserves. But he just does not want to communicate. He has an agenda, he's had that agenda, especially about this water carnival, since the first year he was mayor. You know, he tried to throw his weight around, got told he couldn't do things that he wanted to do, and he just had an axe to grind about this water carnival. It's a shame, it's a shame. It should never have happened. And as far as the employee, Jennifer Deeds, she's a woman that greatly deserves the position that he's not offering her. She's worked single-handedly. She was ready and willing and able to do everything that needed to be done for that water carnival. You know, she did not say, no, it could not be done. She said, yes, everything's ready to be done. You know? But instead, the mayor chose to keep it quiet, keep it to himself, and then drop it on us all at the last minute, you know, to cancel it, so that it was too late to do anything. If we'd have known on the June 18th meeting, we could have all got our heads together, figured out, maybe had a smaller water carnival if we had logistical problems. But he didn't bother bringing the community or the council into that conversation. You know, this is why I, you know, was right here for this resolution. I hope he resigns. If not, you know, I hope we can get him out some other way, because he does not respect the employees of this town, he does not respect the residents of this town. I don't believe he respects himself, you know? But it's just a shame that we had to have this cancellation once again at the last minute, you know? Hopefully, we can do things to improve the community and get the community back together in other events. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Have a nice night.
Well, I'm gonna be a little long-winded, because we're gonna go over a couple things. Sorry, guys. Give you a little history, people. I've been, I was born and raised here. I was born and raised here my whole life. My family had a family business in this town. I was a member of the Browns Mills Emergency Squad for many years. I was a member, still am, of the New Jersey State Forest Fire Service. I've always served the town the best that I could. But I'm gonna give you a little history. When I retired, I got tired of seeing how my town was getting destroyed, because I was born here, I grew up here, and I'm reading the paper, and my head's ready to blow off. And I decided, I went to all the meetings a year prior to I threw my name in the hat, just to see. I went to all the meetings, seen what was going on, feeling my way around, and then I announced that I was gonna run. I get approved by the Republican Club to run. It was Josh, myself, and Jack R.O. Later on, I'll tell you what that means. So Josh and I hit the road, and we're banging on doors, and I wish Josh was here, because he could verify it. But I would say 80% of the doors that I knocked on, I was the lead man, and when the people answered the door, hey, Danny, how are you? And we're gonna vote for you and Josh, or we're not voting for that, blah, 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 blah. So then we spent time trying to convince them that we were running as a team, and we needed him, because I had no idea he was the person that he was. So you can blame me for him, because I dragged him across the finish line. This, their first, so we get elected, and the first water carnival that we had, there was a tremendous, terrible scene at the water carnival. So this Amy gave us all passes, VIP passes, so that we could park at the concession stand at the main beach and be at the carnival. So I show them my pass, I parked the car, we had a tent set up to greet people. And the minute that I got settled, the pin was already pulled on the hand grenade for the water carnival. There was Jack running around like a nut, because there was a black cloud coming, everybody sheltered down, this, that, blah, 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 right? So everybody is running for safety. And when the vendors were coming in, he takes charge, and he's cussing out Nicole Pittman, which was totally uncalled for. So now there's another problem, because where the barricade was, there was a lady and her daughter trying to get through the barricade, but somebody forgot to give them the VIP letter. So she's there. You know who I am? I'm the mayor's wife. Well, why, how would they know it was his wife? She doesn't, she didn't have the blue card that said, this is your VIP card to get into the water carnival. So now she has him on the phone, he comes running over, and he wants to fire the two cops that wouldn't let his wife into the water carnival. Now, this is really, I mean, this is insane, right? So then he leaves there, and now he cusses out Nicole Pittman again, because she's lining up. I mean, she had everything charted out, where the water ice guy went, where this guy goes, I'm taking over. And he had it totally screwed up. He had two water ice guys together, they're fighting amongst themselves, it was a total zoo, right? So now it's time for the fireworks, and I mentioned it in the meeting, I see Michelle Brown running 100 miles an hour across the parking lot. I said, Michelle, what is wrong? Oh, the mayor wants me to open the gates so his family can sit on the beach and observe the fireworks. With all the chaos going on, he just kept throwing gas on the fire, you know? So the only problem that I can remember at the water carnival was caused by Jack the You know? So in the meantime, at the next meeting, Nikki gets fired. And she did an excellent job, she was a good person, born and raised in Browns Mills, and at the time, is Gay still here? We overturned the firing, correct? Right? And we got her reinstated. So the bottom line, for us to fire Nikki Pittman cost the taxpayer $600,000. Okay? You know, I asked, you know, I just ask normal questions, because I'm from a business background. I said, Jack, well, can I see the folder? I'd like to see her performance reviews. What is a performance review? I said, it's something that should be done every year for every employee. Right? There was nothing in there. There was one thing in her folder that I think she either forgot the clock out or forgot the clock in for lunch. You know? That was the only thing in there. And I told him, I said, when you go to court, you don't have a chance of winning. This isn't 25 years ago, because you don't like a person, you can fire them. You have to be prepared and have, do your homework in order to fire somebody. You know? But they proceeded, and it costs you, or she can witness it, I have him on speakerphone, and we're talking, I can't even tell you what we were talking about. And he says, hold on, shut that effin' thing off. How many effin', I mean, he's going on for like a 10-minute rampage, dropping the F-bomb, you know, more than what I do, screaming and hollering, and here it was his daughter. This is the way that he spoke to his daughter, and we're on speakerphone. I said, I cannot believe this. Right? And it's a fact. We were in our den when the, you know, phone call, and I had it on speakerphone, and we listened to probably eight minutes of him cussing his own daughter out. This is the type of person he is. So the grand finale, I left pamphlets in the back. I don't know if anybody picked them up. Okay? But I just want to go over this with you, is when we were up here, and there was, I'm not mentioning the names of the investigations, but when it brought, when it came to our attention, it was out of line. And Gay, back me up again, we voted as the council to investigate between Jack and this township employee in investigation. So I think there was probably like four or five. We paid a lot of money for the investigations, the council never got a formal report from the attorneys that handled it, but on this pamphlet, I want to show you what they did and who signed it. So the bill came in from the attorneys, and there were 1,500, 1,600. So when the bills came in, and it doesn't matter to me, but the two signatures, so you need three signatures to approve a voucher. So when the one bill came in, they charged it to the tax office for some type of litigation over an appraisal. Is everybody following what I'm trying to say here? So I don't know, and, I mean, there's a whole pile of them here, and every one of them were signed mostly by the same two people, and that was the former business administrator and our mayor, where it's misappropriation of funds, I would think. Would that be correct, Joe?
I would have to look into that, but.
But you saw this, right?
I saw a portion of that.
Okay. But, so we had all these investigations over, we have no idea that all these lawsuits are coming down, but they buried the first initial investigations under, instead of under legal, we have a legal account where we, everything should have been upfront, but they were all buried under tax problems. So this is your mayor and his sidekick, and this is how they were running the town. So not only is it grounds for censored, but they should be locked up for it. So I'm just bringing it, you know, I'm gonna probably be in the biggest doghouse you ever seen in your life, but I don't care, because I care about my town, and I don't care about these two people that did this. And it's facts. I'd like to answer one of your questions that you said when you came up about Sunbury Village. Okay? We have.
Before you say that, I want to say that when you guys ran, Josh came out to my door and talked before you guys had elected, two hours.
Yeah. We knocked on a lot of doors over there.
So, but that man did not come.
Yeah. Well, but one of the things, is it okay for me to say anything? We have quite a bit of money, and we're gonna hit Sunbury Village, because, see, my idea of redevelopment in this town is to take the great people of Sunbury Village that have owned houses for 40 years and help them. Okay? My idea of redevelopment is not destroying a farm to put 600 houses in. Okay? Sunbury qualifies for the re, and I've been working with our director, and we are gonna come knocking on doors, we're gonna help yous.
Well, the other problem is the two good landlords that came in that are renting, I mean, we had problems with the landlords before, the ones that are in there now that have taken over, one of which is not even paying taxes, has more tax needs on their houses. And all they're doing is, as I've said to the town council before, raping the people of Sunbury Village.
No, we're gonna come in with the guns ablaze them. All right? But the people that own their homes there are gonna be taken care of first, and we're gonna do everything we can to make that a nice development.
It can be.
It is.
They have 15 years.
I remember when it was built.
The first couple years that I lived there, I told my partner, unless staying here, are you kidding me? This place scares the crap out of me. 15 years later, I'm still there.
But there's a lot of lovely people in that town, and they need a hand up, and we're gonna give it to them. But I'd like to thank everybody. I hope you get this and you read it. They were back there on the back thing, and that just gives you one example of what, not those two girls over there, but when we had a business administrator and everything else. over there, but when we had it, a business administrator and everything else, wasn't good for the town. And we uncovered it, and I'm going to push it all away.
Well, when they first did the one way in Sunbury, they couldn't even put the signs up because they didn't have enough washers. They couldn't even, the business administrators, that, oh, we're sorry, yeah, we have to delay it because.
Yeah, well, Lowe's was probably out of them, they wouldn't go to O'Brien's. But thank you so much for coming out.
Did I behave myself? No.
No. Vote for Dewey.
You got my vote, Danny. All right, so I had actually prepared a statement tonight that's directed to the mayor, and I was told to be careful, because I don't want to take away, and I was told by other councils to be careful about my statement, because I don't want to take away from what was said by the residents tonight. You spoke volumes. I said, if, if what I said here didn't reflect and mirror what you said more as a summary of what was said tonight, I wouldn't read it, but it does, so I am going to read it. Bear with me. I'm going to read it as I'm talking to, what does the R.O. stand for?
To be announced.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, and this, I don't usually prepare things, I usually shoot from the hip, but I wanted this to be spot-on. During your tenure, you have subjected the residents and employees of our township to repeated and deeply troubling instances of misconduct. These include, but are not, but are not limited to, sexual harassment, sexual discrimination, the creation of a toxic work environment, environment, acts of retaliation, and decision-making that has caused or threatens to cause irreparable harm to this community. Most recently, you denied a highly qualified township employee an opportunity they rightfully earned, not based on merit, but out of vindictiveness tied to that employee's association with this council and a former staff member. This is not only retaliatory, but reflective of your broader pattern of politically motivated and inappropriate behavior. In a further act of retaliation, you unilaterally canceled the township's upcoming Water Carnival, an event that had been in planning for months and was highly anticipated by our residents. The carnival was developed through meaningful collaboration between township departments, council members, and community members. Its cancellation without any formal consultation or valid explanation was clearly intended to punish both the council and the residents who have called for your resignation due to your ongoing misconduct and gross mismanagement. To underscore the severity of your actions, it must be noted that on June eleventh, you convened a private meeting with township department heads to discuss whether their departments could support the carnival. While there were challenges, no department had stated they were unable to participate. Despite this, you still canceled the event. Even more troubling, you instructed those in attendance to keep the meeting confidential, deliberately excluding council and violating principles of transparency and good governance. Your actions are isolated, they are part of a sustained pattern of retaliatory and unethical leadership, with eight lawsuits currently pending and more anticipated, not to mention well over a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. This township is bearing the legal and financial burden of your misconduct. Your mistreatment of township employees, particularly women, your inability to, or outright refusal to collaborate with council, and your continued abuse of authority have made it clear that you are unfit to serve. We are there, we are therefore demanding your immediate resignation. This township deserves leadership grounded in integrity, accountability, and respect for all its employees and residents. We urge you to do the right thing and step down before further harm is done to the people and institutions of Pemberton Township. We've got a great township, we've got great employees, two of them right here, work closely with council to make sure that we have the resources available to you to make this township successful and make you successful in living in this township. The only roadblock we have, as has been evidenced through your comments, our comments, you witness it on a daily basis, the only roadblock we have is the man that should be sitting in that chair, but like a coward, he ran out.
Jack R.O.
Thank you, Danny, for that clarification. But I'm going to leave it at that, I think your comments, that I just spoke volumes of what we face on a daily basis, what these poor township employees face on a daily basis, do you think they want to come to work and walk in a building for this gentleman? A gentleman, I'm sorry, that was a bad term, for this person? That's even kind of a loose term. It's disgusting, it is absolutely disgusting, it is disheartening, it's an embarrassment, it is, it is an insult to the employees and insult to you. Thank you for being here tonight, the showing of support from this community for, for what we're trying to get accomplished has been overwhelming. I thank you, the council members, thank you, thank you for being here tonight, have a good night. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I wish you to adjourn.
Well, we figured if the mayor's a point, you had a little say.